I'd like to apologize for us running a little late. To welcome tonight, I'd like to call the meeting to order for redevelopment for August 10th. Instead of Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Yonah.
Mr. Conley.
Present.
Mr. Tippy.
Here.
Mr. Troxel.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Getzler.
Here.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Chief Cruzan.
Here.
And I see your Deputy Chief Businessmaster here, Mr. Paxton. Chief Dowling.
Here.
Deputy Chief Sagrapi.
Here.
And Mr. Mandan.
Here.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Volkman.
Here.
Diane Moore.
Here.
Janice Malosky, present.
Thank you,女士.
You're welcome.
The minutes of July 13th, 2016, public meeting, Pledge of the Board. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Additional claims, any additional claims, Mr. Malosky?
None at this time.
Pledge of the Board.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Correspondence room and reports from staff?
No correspondence or reports.
Hey, anything from council members?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Do it, compliments on your crew overseeing the concrete job at the theaters. That's really making that walking friendly over there in that area. And with all the commercial, uh, that really came out nice and very efficient and it was done really quick, so.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you. Uh, there is no old business under new business. Consider acceptance of application for sign improvement program part two. Applicant is David Jeroszuski, Lakeside Inn, uh, two, 21 East Joliet. Favorable recommendation by Tom Fassad, Advisory Committee three zero. Pledge of the Board. Or Mr. Volkman, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is for a street at Lakeside Inn. Uh, this is, is, he put in another application to do the west side of the building now. Uh, you know, last year he did the front of the building. Uh, it was for, doing the same type of a treatment, deepest treatment to the 10 feet from grid and then installing on over the, the site door. Uh, the total price that qualifies would be, just the deepest work was $13,095. Half of that would be $6,547.50.
Thank you, Mr. Volkman. Pledge of the Board. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Uh, under B, consider acceptance of application for, for sign improvement program applicant, applicant is Christina Huckleberg, who owns A Plus Hair Craft Incorporated located at 149 East Joliet Street. Favorable recommendation by Tom Fassad, Advisory Committee three zero. Mr. Volkman?
Uh, this is for a sign to replace the, a sign that was, you know, basically fell apart earlier this year. Uh, the Huckleburgs own building at the corner of Joliet and Austin, and they put in a design for a sign, uh, improvement there, which qualifies under the downtown redevelopment standards. The sign, we, we did deepen it a little bit from the standard because of the parking's right next to it, so we double-handed the sign a little bit so that actually it wouldn't be impaired by parts of cars. Uh, the total price is $3,715 for the project, of which they qualify for 50 percent, which would be $3,657.50.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Bob, sign, sign improvement falls under the, the sign?
Yes.
Uh, falls under the sign program?
Yes.
Excuse me for clarification. The total amount was $7,315, half of which is $3,657.
Correct. Can I say that more?
Yeah.
You said $3,715.
Thank you.
And I saw Luanne look up and I said, she said, "That's not half."
Thanks, Bill. That's all right. New man.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we do have a motion. Second. A second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Is there any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Mr. President?
Before you close, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Uh, there is a certificate of termination and discharge of the 2013 B bonds for the Shop 78 project that I have with me. I thought I sent it over to Bob. Uh, the bonds have been issued, they can pay, they can discharge, and it's satisfied. Uh, and our bond council, Jeremy Ullman, had already checked off on the certificate of termination and discharge. So.
Does need a motion to terminate?
Please.
Okay. Pledge of the Board, and then?
So moved, Shop 78. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And then we'll ask only one more time, is there any more business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Hearing none, this, uh, meeting is adjourned and we'll move on to a board board meeting. Good evening, I'd like to call a Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, August 10th. Um, the roll call will be minus Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel, because the Water Works only allows two members. Um, first item on the agenda is minutes of July 13th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say whatever I say, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Any additional claims, Mrs. Malosky?
No additional claims at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims, all in favor, say whatever I say, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Any correspondence on Water Works, Mr. Volkman?
No correspondence or reports.
Reports? There is no old business, there's no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding Water Works? Any business from the floor regarding Water Works? No business from the floor, this means adjourned, we'll move right into the utility board. I'd like to call the utility board meeting, uh, for Wednesday, August 10th, and we'll add Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel back to the roll call. First item is the minutes of July 13th, public meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on the minutes, all in favor, say whatever I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Any additional claims, Mrs. Malosky?
Well, there's no additional claims, but, um, I want to talk about letter D and E. And these are waste, that's our water scenario sewer bond payments. And on D, that should be able to Bank of New York. And on E, I have Wells Fargo and, and correction, this Bank of New York. So please make a note on that on letter D and E. Those are bond payments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pledge of the Board, motion to approve with the changes from our board chair.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on the claims, all in favor, say whatever I say, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, any correspondence, Mr. Volkman, or Mr. Hewitt on utilities?
No correspondence.
No reports?
No reports.
There's no old business, we'll move right into new business. New business, letter A, is resolution 2016 dash 18, is a resolution to transfer funds within the category appropriations. Mr. Malosky?
And this is for our wastewater O and M fund, and there's, um, I believe about seven different transfers from the various levels of funds that I need to get approved before tonight.
So moved, that's a second, Mr. President.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second on the resolution 2016 dash 18, all in favor, say whatever I say, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Uh, any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor, this means adjourned, we'll move right into the town council.
The town council meeting to order for August 10th, 2016, at 7:25 PM. Let the record reflect that the roll call for the utility board is the same town council meeting. Uh, next item, minutes of the July 13th, 2016, public meeting, Pledge of the Council Members.
So moved.
Second, motion, second and discussion. Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved, five zero. Any additional claims, Mrs. Malosky?
Mr. President, we do have additional claim by our attorney, Mr. Austin, I would like him to deal with for us.
There is a mediation fee for attorney, uh, Justice Murray, that is, the building has been on process to this point and requires a payment. That is the amount, $750. Thank you. Any additional claims?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, David, in what, in what case?
I'm sorry, that's pertaining to the South Comp PSF matters involving Lake County. Thank you, I'm sorry, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the claims with the addition of that Attorney Oshin that has added.
There's been a motion, second and a second, any further discussion? Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, what Attorney Oshin just added, just so you know, might then be paid on our public safety loan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's been a motion, a second, seeing, hearing, no other discussion, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. Any correspondence, uh, Mr. Volkman?
No correspondence.
Any reports from staff? Mr. Mandan, any reports from you?
No.
Do it.
No report.
Chief Cruzan?
One announcement, Mr. Chairman, um, September 11th memorial will take place, excuse me, on September 11th at 1:00 PM at the memorial across the street. This year, as you know, um, the memorial will be held prior to the September town council meetings. We, Chief Dowling and I wanted to announce it tonight.
Chief Dowling, anything?
No report tonight.
Deputy Chief Sagrapi?
No report.
Uh, council members, anything? Just a couple reminders for newspaper purposes, 150th anniversary celebration coming up on September 9th and 10th, which is also before next council meeting. There's, there's some details online that I didn't even get for, for the article. Thanks.
Well, one item, Mr. Troxel, I wanted to keep you guys informed, uh, I mentioned a, a lot, lots of to go about the Mercy Group has restructured their committees and such, and they, actually what they've done, they, they developed more committees. So, but just so let you know, they, they took the normal transportation board and made it into a technical board, where now there's only four members from each county on the technical board, and then the subcommittee now report to the, to the technical committee, and the technical committee reports to the full Mercy Board. In the meantime, they developed a board called the Service Transportation Board, which, which handles all the streets and roads of the county. And somehow I was lucky enough to get appointed to that board and was made chairman of that board.
Congratulations.
So, um, I will, I thought it was important to stay on that board, because that's the board that we're following, our Kandian project through. And so I think it's real important that we, that we stay on top of that. Jeff Hewitt, who's, who's been a great asset to the Mercy Board, attends our meetings on, on that board, and he also attends now the technical committee board to, to keep a, you know, to oversee what they do on their meetings. Ultimately, it still has to come to the full Mercy Board, which, uh, we have full support, or, or we have major support, I should say, from the rest of the county on the Kandian project, because it means a lot to the, to the whole county. So, just wanted to let you know that, that that's going on, and it just basically added another meeting that Jeff and I go to, just to stay on top of it.
Good, well, congratulations on your appointment as chairman of that committee.
Thanks.
Uh, any, uh, next item, item six, public comments regarding agenda items. If you'd like to make a comment on agenda items, now's the time to do that. Any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to old business, which there is none. New business. Item eight, ordinance number 1887, ordinance annexing certain contiguous land to the town share of Lake County, Indiana, and related there too, first reading, petitioner Nipco, Rosalakan, appears to be 73rd. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, this is the, uh, section, small section of a white trail that runs north from 73rd to where the border of, uh, the Foxville Villas is.
Pledge of the, uh, council members on ordinance number 1887?
Move to approve ordinance number 1887.
There's been a motion?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Can we adopt it, Mr.?
No. There's a public hearing next.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Next item, item B, ordinance number 1888, puts into ordinance of town share of Lake County, Indiana, offering conditions of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection with them, and on account of the issuance of bonds, appropriation, the proceeds thereof, and related there too, first reading. Mr. Volkman?
Uh, this would be the repayment bonds for the, uh, to repay the Tiff District for the purchase of the racetrack, Liliana Speedway, and, uh, with some additional funds for doing some studies and actually some remediation work on site.
Thank you. Pledge of council members on ordinance 1888.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, question for Bob. Does this have anything to do with, uh, any bonds that are coming off the books? Or is this, or is this be, or is this just finance, our movement to get the financing set up for a lot?
This is, this is actually a general obligation bond that will be issued to repay the district for money that was borrowed from the Tiff District to purchase the, the Liliana Speedway. And we have to repay that home by the end of this year.
Yes, 57th, 31st, it must be paid back.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Attorney? Aren't we also seeing a part bond issue that'll come off the books? And isn't that your question, how?
Um, I guess that, that would be my question.
Not part bond, it's, um, general obligation.
Okay.
We did pay off.
I'm sure the same source of funds.
I, I just have to pay the, um, that's much.
Yeah. We did pay off a general obligation bond, I believe that was for the 77th gathering of the bridge.
Bridge, correct.
And that was paid off this year.
About the same amount.
But isn't, isn't like, you know, we're discontinuing one, or another, this is a new issuance.
Okay. Pledge of the council on ordinance number 1888.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. Then again, first reading. Next item, C, ordinance number 1889, an ordinance establishing a rainy day fund for the town share of Lake County, Indiana, offering to use of set established rainy day funds and all matters related there too. Is this Mr. Volkman or Mrs. Malosky?
Um, Mr. President, I had debated this, just the term, the rainy day fund, I don't want to, to know that we have extra money that we're transferring to a separate fund. This is, let me just go back a step. When we do our budgets, basically, um, the state board and the DLGF likes to have a balance in there on December 31st of cash balance of about 25 percent. So, uh, Mr. Volkman and I have worked continuously to get that balance to about 15 percent. So we still, we, we feel we still have room to move it another 10 percent. However, in talking with Attorney Oshin and Mr. Volkman, I have found that, let's just say we have a special need or a special purpose, and we have both in our general fund and our tax funds, the appropriations to cover it and the cash, we can simply move that over and, uh, leave it out of there, or maybe at the end of the year we exceed our 20 or 25 percent balance and still have a little left to, and again, put it away for what is called a rainy day fund. So after careful study, um, I have looked at other, and listened to other clerk treasures in towns and cities in Indianapolis, I think it's appropriate and it's time for me to establish it.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
When I started looking at this for the first time this time, I noted in my file that there's been discussion and consideration by Janice and her team since 2006. What brought this really to you this time, and what put, and on Janice's pleasure to present to you, was the one-time special distribution that was recently distributed under the law. If you remember, there was a.
Yes, yes.
Significant distribution. Well, that legislation permitted that one-time special distribution, permitted a split in the proceeds, such that you could deposit 75 percent or up to 100 percent into, uh, that one-time fund, but you could also elect or determine to deposit one-fourth of that, up to one-fourth of that, into a rainy day fund.
Example.
So, you didn't do that now, and you may not do it, but if you ever decided to do it, or determined to do it, you have the fund vehicle in place. It's a special revenue, non-reverting fund, established by this ordinance, which means it'll roll over from year to year, it won't go away on, and the nuances and vagaries of the budgeting process.
Right.
And it's, it provides options as being established, and that's why it's here.
Mr. Oshin, and that can be used for, I'm thinking, any purpose, but basically you wouldn't use it for salaries and benefits?
You would not.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify that. So maybe capital.
It, it's contemplated for capital.
Right, okay.
Very good, thank you both for the explanation.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve ordinance 1889.
A motion to approve 1889, second, and hearing a second, any discussion? Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
A second, any discussion? Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is item number D, which is another ordinance, ordinance number 1890, an ordinance in managing town ordinance number 1589, being an ordinance establishing an activities fee schedule for the town department of parks and recreation, um, and related there too, and you can, um, town code sections or town ordinances or parks thereof in conflict with your weather. We have a fee schedule in front of us here, advised of August of 2016. Um, I believe what I see here, there's been, they've identified on exhibit A, some of the areas that we have price changes for activity. Mr. Volkman, are those only the items that have changed on here, is what's been denoted?
Just the ones that are, that are denoted there.
It looks like there are.
And we added a, a 150.
Three, four.
152.
Pardon me?
We added a, a range of fees for the 150, because we have some VIP packages and, you know, we have rides and stuff for the 150, so they, they put that range as the very last one. Those are the new fees that were put in place.
And there was one price change under instructional classes from 20 to 110 there, so. With that being mentioned, gentlemen, um, pledge of council on ordinance number 1890.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Uh, just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I think we should really give kudos to, uh, John Nomisich and his staff, because we really do offer a lot of programs, and if you look down at this list, I mean, very hats, so.
Agreed.
Hats off to them.
All in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen, none, all in favor, say what I say, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, I will focus to the advertisement because of the fees. The Deputy Chief.
Next item, item number 1891, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of the town share of Lake County, Indiana, of certain improvements and extensions to towns and sewage works, issuance of sale of revenue bonds, provide funds for payment of the costs thereof, the issuance of sale of bond, anticipation notes, in anticipation of the issuance and such sales of such bonds, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and often related there too, first reading. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, this would be the beginning of the issuance of the bonds to finance the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, the clarifiers that are under design right now. Uh, the amount of this bond would be $7.5 million. The project costs $7.5 million. Currently, of that $7.5 million, I think St. John's committed to $1 million in cash towards the project, but the, the details of the agreement with St. John are, are not finalized yet. This is just the beginning of that, and you'll see this on the agendas for several months going. This is to keep the time, the timeline in, in line to get the financing in place before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
But we do have an agreement with St. John that they are going to pay their percentage.
Correct. Actually, the language in here on guarantee of the bonds is part of this, this bond ordinance, but the actual agreement, financial agreement binding the towns of St. John and Shererville together for repayment of these is not in place, but to stay on track, the first reading has to take place, and in the interim, you'll see that agreement come across both councils prior to, uh, selling these bonds. So before we authorize to sell those, these bonds, that agreement has to be in place because it's part of the guarantees.
Are they discussing changes to what we originally talked about?
No.
No.
No, it's, it's.
They're drafting the documents, they're financing documents, they're, yeah.
They're having to draft.
They have the first draft in Indiana.
St. St. John is, you know, they're, they're going to have to increase their sewer rates, and, uh, they're, you know, the two financial consultants, Carl Center for St. John and Ted for us, they're exchanging documents now. Uh, we've done a rate study on the Shererville plant, so the, the treatment rate for St. John is going up a little bit, uh, for Shererville, but that agreement is what will bind the two.
Are the Shererville rates going up at all?
No. No. The treatment rate in St. John is going up. We, if you remember, we retired a different bond issue.
Right.
From the wastewater treatment plant, that was part of our, we paid, you know, paid that off, and that was part of, of the capture here. Um, Ted, Ted has assured me that the Shererville rate's okay. Part of the guarantee for that is contained in these documents, is part of that agreement with St. John.
Because we don't, you know, we don't have this ordinance in our package.
No.
No.
I think it was. Oh, it was on the table, I'm sorry.
It was 31 pages.
Oh, that's a good reason.
I believe you did send an email out regarding.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I sure did.
That was pretty, it was pretty wordy.
Okay, well, the, the title's pretty wordy. Anyway.
I know, lawyers.
Lawyers. Anyway, that's back here. Ordinance number 1891, is there a motion?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
And a second, any additional discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, he would sign. Motion carries by two. Item F, Resolutions two thousand and sixteen dash seventeen, is a resolution commemorating the addition of Indiana into the State Board in eighteen sixteen and affirming participation in Indiana's first U.S. display legacy project. Mr. Volpin, we did have a, a program here Friday.
We did, we had a flag raising ceremony here Friday at noon, and participation by both the police and fire honor guard. They presented the colors and raised the flag. It's the eighteen eighteen U.S. flag that had twenty stars on it, which was the first flag that commemorated the addition of Indiana as one of the United States. So it was a nice ceremony, a lot of the town staff members were present for that. There are some pictures that are, I, I believe have been posted on the website.
Very good.
You can actually find me commemorating Indiana as the nineteenth state.
Nineteenth star.
The nineteenth state.
Very good. Pleasure to counsel members on resolution two thousand and sixteen dash seventeen.
So moved, second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Uh, next, we have Resolutions two thousand and sixteen dash nineteen, a resolution to transfer funds with category appropriation. Mr. Malhousby?
And this would be for the sixth department out of our general fund, which is the Animal Control Department, various transfers, and M V H, separate from general, motor vehicle highway.
Pleasure, council members, in motion?
Sir.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, he would sign. Motion carries by two. Next item, H, Resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty, a resolution of the Towne Council of the Towne Sherbo Lake County Indiana supporting Senate Resolution Number Twelve, approved by the Senate of the General Assembly of the State of Indiana in its second regular session two thousand and sixteen, sponsored by Senator Rick Nemeier, pertaining to revision or elimination by the United States Wildlife Protection Agency of the requirements under which the motor vehicle inspection and maintenance I M programs in Lake Porter Counties in Indiana are operated and all matters related there too. Mr. Volpin, anything you want to add to this resolution?
Well, this is a request by Senator Nemeier to, basically, to stop the vehicle emission testing program in Lake Porter Counties.
Mr. President, make the motion to approve, second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
One, one comment, Mr. Chairman. Has this, has this study included, how many jobs it would cost? I mean, how many jobs was it?
No, I, I don't believe this. It was a question of jobs, it's a question of, you know, we're getting lumped into the Chicago Metro District, we'd actually pass the air quality test here locally, but because we're in the Chicago EPA district, we still have to maintain during the vehicle inspections. I don't know that it was consideration of, in fact, I'm sure it's not a consideration of, but it's jobs, it's just a unnecessary cost to taxpayers and an inconvenience to the residents here.
There's been a motion and a second, any additional comments? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Um, item aye. Like you may have a motion made to take that off the agenda this time?
Motion to take off, in, in, second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two, take it off. Item J, Consider Acceptance of Proposal from Robson Engineering for Construction Engineering and Inspection and Layout Services for Plum Creek Fire Station, remodel and additional project. Uh, Mr. Volpin, is it amended?
Uh, this is just basically a proposal for construction services for the renovations to the Plum Creek Fire Station.
Pleasure to council members on accepting this proposal?
So moved.
There's been a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Next, item K, Consider Variants of Use to Permit Construction of an Off-Cremes Sign four foot by ten and eleven sixteenths width by seventeen foot high for Best Western. This is B Z A case number sixteen dash seven dash eleven, petitioner Reimer Expeditors, Sue Reimer, location nineteen thirty-five U S forty-one, former site of Long John Silver. Comes with as a favorable recommendation by the B Z A with conditions, four zero. Mr. Volpin?
Uh, yes, this is actually the Best Western, Best Western was doing a sign upgrade. They, they had B Z A approval for an off-premise sign back when they first built the hotel or shortly afterwards. Sign was a little non-conforming, but one of the criteria within our ordinance is, is if they're changing, they change that sign or anything, they lose their non-conformant status, so they had to come back in and, and they have a rebranding, so they have a brand new sign, new configuration and everything, so it wasn't like they could just retrofit it over and replace it, so they had to go back before the B Z A reinstated variants, restated variants.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, Bob, are they going to put it in the same location as the present site?
Same, or put on the same old one.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
And then, and are you reading this, that property is owned by Long John Silver Hill?
It was always an off-premise sign, so it was a variance for an off-premise sign originally, but it came, fell out of compliance when they petitioned to put a new sign there. So it's basically, they're putting a new sign can on there. So they're going to continue, they had to come in and ask for a new variance to have an off-premise sign because they lost their non-conforming status.
E. Pleasure to council members on, uh
Mr. President, I have a question. On the agenda, it reads, height of seventeen feet?
Yes.
Then, and the findings of fact, limited to fourteen feet?
That's the condition.
That was one of the conditions placed on it by the B Z A.
So, okay, so we're, we still have their original request at seventeen feet, and we have the option of adopting the fourteen foot?
That's correct.
That the B Z A recommended?
There is, there is a use.
Pleasure to council members on this item.
That's a good point, Mr. Tippie, so, so we're, if we're, if we're only, we're only calling on the conditions that the B Z A gave?
Is that correct?
Make the motion on the line.
That's right. You can make it twelve feet, you know, it's, it's your, your request, but I mean, you could adopt it with the provisions or the conditions that the B Z A put.
And Mr. Tippie, you're saying the conditions says it's fourteen feet?
Yes.
Due to the finding of facts from the B Z A?
Yeah, due to discussions and the, what took place at the B Z A meeting, their, their decision was to limit the height of the sign to fourteen feet, or to recommend limiting the sign. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the variance in accordance with the B Z A's findings, including the limited fourteen foot, I think.
There's been a motion?
Sir.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Next item is Consider Acceptance of Permanent Adsemen in the Route Between Metal Lane Apartments LLC and the Towne Sherbo and two thousand, twenty fifty to twenty sixty, Metal Lane. Mr. Volpin?
Yeah, this is, uh, part of some, for a storm drain project that we're doing along Metal Lane. This is part of the watershed study and a recommendation by Niss Engineering. He laid this out, and actually, we changed the project a little bit because the original, we had an easement that was there, but we would have gone through some improvements that the owner had on his site. This, we moved the, you know, plotted a new easement, he signed off on it, and it actually avoids, you know, going through or tearing out some of the improvements that he has on his property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I would approve, uh, the acceptance of the property.
There's been a motion? Second, any second, hearing, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Next item.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Volpin, one more last question, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Huard, when, when this construction is starting?
All of the, actually, we have a pre-coming of that sewer project. Rex is doing the sanitary sewer in Crestwood, that actually ties into this area, and, uh, we've already notified B and D, who's doing the storm sewer, that they can proceed. So they're ordering their materials and, uh, right now. So it should start, I would think, within the next three days.
I, I think that's a fair answer.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, item M, Consider Acceptance of Consideration of Nation, of, to Consider Relation to Campaign, Campaign Academy, uh, excuse me, for the run of rolls scheduled for Saturday, October fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, for one thousand dollars. We have eleven architect here from Los, and he is senior director, developed on the relations for one thousand dollars. Pleasure to council members?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. Next item is Item Natural Claim of Month in September two thousand and sixteen, as a childhood cancer awareness month in the Towne Sherbo, we do a confirmation, and we'll read that. Whereas in the past year, more than thirteen northwest Indiana children have been diagnosed with cancer. In the past year, two, year, two more children have lost wives to cancer. And whereas, childhood cancer is the number one disease-related killer of kids in the U.S., one in five children are terminal and diagnosed. Three in five suffer life-threatening impacts of treatment that significantly alter their quality of life. And one in twenty-five children will be diagnosed with cancer before the age of twenty. And whereas, childhood cancer is on the rise. Childhood cancers and adult cancers are different, yet we continue to use the downside of adult cancer protocols on kids with many times devastating effects. The lack of childhood cancer research has tremendous impact on kids and significant costs to society now and in the future. And whereas, despite the effects, childhood cancer research is vastly consistently underfunded. Less than four percent of the National Cancer Institute's budget is solely dedicated to childhood cancer research. In twenty-five years, the B Z A has initially approved only two drugs for any child with cancer, and half of all chemotherapies used for children's cancers are over twenty-five years old. And whereas, the incidence of childhood cancers on the rise, with an estimated fifteen thousand seven hundred children diagnosed every year, four three per day in the United States alone. Of those four three children per day, eight will die. And whereas, the incidence of cancer among adolescents and even adults is increasingly at greater rate than any underage group, except those over sixty-five year of age, and an estimated two thousand nine hundred children die each year of cancer in the United States alone. The average age of death for a child with cancer is eight, causing a child to lose sixty-nine years of expected life. And whereas, many adult cancers can be diagnosed early, and eighty percent of kids, cancer has already spread to other part areas of the body by the time it's diagnosed. And whereas, the most, and whereas, the cause of most childhood cancers are unknown, and present childhood cancer cannot be prevented, and families who are or have been in treatment were tired of seeing to change and those learning statistics. Therefore, now therefore, I like way to axel, present Towne Council, with your vital claim of month of September two thousand and sixteen, new childhood cancer awareness month in Towne Sherbo. All approved?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Aye.
Item O, Consider Acceptance of donations, this is not absolute, quite a few here, you don't have to read them all.
Um, no, why not? I have to say there's a lot of the National Night Out, and I'd like to recognize these donations.
That's right.
Okay. So donation acceptance as of today, August tenth, twenty sixteen. Animal control donation, Ted Speed Store gets certified, sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Ted's Speed Store gets certified, seventy-nine dollars. And Sherbo Girls softball, two pets like it, cards, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Total for animal control, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ten cents. National Night Out donations. Republic Services Roll-Up Service for National Night Out, ten, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Rollus Photography, one hundred dollars. Dr. Merritt Tea Light, P C, one hundred. Morning Star Enterprise, two, one hundred. Bounce Two LLC, two fifty. Tom and Ed's Auto Lobby, four hundred. Ogden Welding Systems, Inc., twenty-five dollars. Midwest Pike and Reeve Archery, Inc., one hundred. American Community Bank, two hundred. House of India, Inc., one hundred. Sherwood Golf Concessions, one hundred. Last Chance Overstock LLC, twenty-five. Alternative Energy Solutions, L T D, twenty-five. Yep, fifteen. Doing Businesses, General Nutrition, number seven eight five six, twenty-five dollars. B and B Source, two hundred. Providence Bank and Trust, one fifty. Little's Auto, Inc., fifty. Caliber Consulting slash G T C Communications, Inc., twenty-five dollars. Second Street Dance Studio, Inc., fifty. State Farm, James Miscavige, twenty-five. Towns W Daniels and Company, P C, fifty. Enterprise Network Group of Indiana LLC, one hundred. Ruschek Plan Sales, twenty-five. Christina Lynn Flores, one hundred. Ellen Langske Center, fifty. J DIP Industrial, D, Doances, Rose, Rosewood Inn, one hundred. Midwest Insurance Center, Inc., one hundred. Round O'Clock One, LLC, one hundred. Down and From Dancers, Inc., one hundred. Wright Health Plumbing, Inc., one hundred. David Ross, one hundred. Colley Real Estate, one hundred. Nancy Spotnails, Inc., one hundred. Pizza R B Center, one hundred and fifty. A A Tripless Flight Corporation, one fifty. Three Smoothies, Inc., three seventy-five. Committee to Luxury Issue, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Mind Box, Northwest Indiana, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Trent's Highway Garage LLC, three hundred and seventy-five. Dunhill Formal, where, Inc., fifty. Modern Heating and Cooling, one hundred. Total donations for National Night Out was five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We have a donation here for Sherbo, one hundred and fifty, anniversary celebration, for a tree donation from Proppets, they've been trust, two hundred and fifty dollars. Sherbo, facade bits and wood properties, facade program, one hundred dollars. We have park donation, fireworks donation, five dollars and twenty-five cents. Police miscellaneous donation, S P Incorporated, one hundred dollars. Canine program donation, Sherbo Central Lions, what, two hundred and fifty dollars. And this is beer freezing for this month, and beer generous, a grand total of six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents in donations.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion?
How, how much of the charts, um, as, as Mr. Malhousby grabbed most of the donations was from the National Night Out, and Dave, I want to compliment the officers and Chief Joe on the fire department handling another great event there, that night, it was a beautiful night, and a lot of people, and we got a lot of compliments on the operation, so it was, it was well done. Uh, and one other question, does the National Night Out donations, does that go into a National Night Out fund, Mr. Donald, or does that just go into the
Can I, you want to, may I answer that, or?
I can answer that, it actually goes into fund number one twenty-five, and the special one I have is restricted just for National Night Out.
Any other special comments, hearing seen none, all favors, he would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by two. At this time, is any business on the floor? Go up to the microphone, any business on the floor? Any business on the floor? This meeting adjourned? Free.